Good evening and welcome to the public hearing of the budget for 2020, 2021. So Smith, can you please do roll call?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mukamah?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Rich?
Here.
I myself here. Ms. Cummings?
Here.
And Ms. Weems?
I'm here.
Thank you. Mr. Rich, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Dr. Herrera, do you have?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move the Board of Education approve the public hearing budget meeting for Monday. I strike that for Tuesday, June 16th, 2020, as presented.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson to approve the agenda for the public hearing of the budget, supported by Mr. Mukamah. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Mrs. Smith, please do roll call vote.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mukamah?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
I myself, yes. Ms. Weems? Ms. Weems?
Yes, apologies.
Hmm, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. The agenda is approved. Moving to the next item, these announcements. For the purposes of our public hearing, there are opportunities to submit public comments. At this time, we will be moving into public comments. We do have one public comment at this point in time, so I will read the public comments. By 2005, the school board and administration had systematically increased district compensation to the highest in the state, claiming over ninety-two percent of the district's annual revenue before a school door had opened. The next seven years witnessed the reduction and elimination of budget allocations for faculty operations and management, technology maintenance and upgrades, staff development, and instructional support. By no coincidence, what Farmington students know and are capable of doing relative to their national, state, and county peers has been consistently declining since 2005. From 2005 to 2012, the annual budget approval was marked by board members proudly announcing to the community that they had successfully served the community a balanced budget. But each of those balanced budgets had expenditures exceeding revenues requiring up to a $5 million withdrawal from the district equity fund. The 2020-2021 budget is presented with a purple banner of balanced scales. Yet again, projected expenditures exceed revenues, and a $3.5 million withdrawal from the fund equity is required to balance the budget. Further, to contain that withdrawal to $3.5 million in addition to excess bond dollars allocated to cover normal operation and maintenance items, the actual planned budget allocations for annual operation and maintenance costs, technology replacement and upgrade, and instructional support has been cut. Educationally and operationally, the budget is far from balanced. From 2012 to 2018, to avoid the projected elimination of the equity fund, the school board and administration made annual cuts to the size and services provided by the district and offered bonuses to staff to retire, pushing the problem out into the future, increasing the state identified number sixty-three million gap in finding funding the district pension liability. More than one of the current board members proudly assured the community after six years of budget cuts, the board had achieved what they claimed to be a sustainable budget. Yet because the budget cuts were targeted at managing the budget's structural problem instead of fixing it, salaries and benefits still claim over eighty-six percent of general revenues in contrast to seventy-five percent where Farmington used to be and where the state average remains. This continuing budget structural problem has prevented the district, to this day, to alter the now sixteen-year decline in what Farmington students know and are capable of doing and leaves the district dependent on the debt financing to operate and maintain its facilities. And despite six years of budget cuts and board and administration claims that the district is right-sized, the district remitted on the community directive to move the district's facilities off the hill, a directive that was identified in the 2018-2019 budget as on target for completion by 2021. And approximately three hundred students are imported from outside of the district to fill classrooms that lack the instructional capacity to successfully educate the Farmington students. Finally, as Farmington marks its first year as the third decade of the 21st century, the Farmington Public School budget remains stuck in the 20th-century school financing. State-of-the-art school financing largely referring to local district compensation and budgeting was identified as one of the three pillars to move Michigan Public Schools upward from their current position of forty-sixth to among the state in the country to end 2014. Debt financing, internal budget allocation cuts, and annual withdrawal from a dwindling equity fund is not balanced budgeting. Sustainable budgeting nor state-of-the-art school financing. Trustees of the students and taxpayers of the Farmington Public School District need to step out of the 20th century. David York. There are no additional public comments, so we will close public comments and move to the public hearing. Mrs. Kowinski?
Great. Well, good evening. You have before you the district's proposed budget for the 2020-21 school year. And tonight is the public hearing on the budget and the 2020 tax levy discussion. We will also ask the board to approve the budget and tax levy, which by law must be done on or before June 30th. So Kim Pincheck is also here with me this evening. And we are going to walk through our PowerPoint presentation for you to highlight some things in the budget. The budget document that we've provided to you contains the budget timeline and updated parameters, excuse me, that were used to create the fiscal year 21 budget as well as the 2019-20 amended budget and three years of actual results for all of the funds of the district. We provide additional information for the general fund, which is the district's main operating fund. The document also contains taxable values and millage information as well as a three-year forecast and the assumptions used for each of the district's funds. Let me share the PowerPoint with you this evening. So again, as I mentioned, the information is provided for each of the district's eight funds, which include the general fund, the debt fund, two special revenue funds, nutrition services and student activities, four capital projects funds, so our technology, other projects, our maintenance bus purchases, our building and site 2018 fund, which is finishing up the 2015 bond issue, as well as the new 2020 building and site fund for our new. We also have the internal service fund, which is our benefit stabilization fund. So the main operating fund of the district is the general fund. And can everybody see this presentation? Did I share my screen?
No, Jennifer.
I'm sorry. I just realized. I apologize.
It is in Board Book, Cass. PowerPoint is in Board Book. You can see that.
Just in case everyone... I apologize. I'm so sorry. So I just walked through all of the funds that we have, so we didn't really get to anything.
We got it in here.
Can you hear? Can you see now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So the main operating fund of the district is the general fund, and that is where our emphasis is for the presentation. So the budget development process began by identifying the timeline and key parameters and assumptions that were used to create a budget forecast. So we've updated that budget forecast numerous times during the year as more information became known. And really, more of the changes came in the latter part, starting in March, as things came about that could impact our budget significantly. So as we've received budget information from the state, staffing and enrollment numbers and projections, instructional supports that are needed, and then the impacts of the coronavirus pandemic. So we did build in a reduction of $650 per pupil into the 2019-20 amended budget based on information that has come out from the state indicating at this point a $1.1 billion shortfall in the state aid fund. And reductions were identified to help absorb some of this cut. So $650 per pupil is just over $6 million for the district. So our budget development process, information can be found on the district's webpage, which is noted here on the slide, www.farmington.k12.mi.us, under the transparency reporting in several budget years are included. So public schools obviously continue to struggle with the number of unknowns that affect the budget when it must be adapted. The majority of our funding is based upon the number of pupils we educate. We are also still waiting on a signed budget from the legislature. And neither the House or Senate has come out with their budget. So we are not expecting to have any budget information until most likely into September after the August revenue estimating conference that will take place. So unfortunately, the information that we're presenting now, there will be amendments made to our fiscal year 21 budget. That will either take place this fall, or we may even have to do an amendment sooner than that based on what we find out from the state. So we update our budget forecasts and examine the assumptions every time we do amend the budget or end a fiscal year. So we have worked diligently on solving that structural problem. However, we are continuing to experience declining enrollment. The significant reduction in state aid for the per-pupil funding as well as rising retirement costs do create a challenge to balance that budget on an annual basis. So one positive factor, though, was that we did pass our bond issue in March of 2020. And so that we can continue the needed renovations and updates to our buildings as well as continue infusing technology into the instructional program as well as purchase needed buses. So this has allowed us to keep our general operating dollars in the classroom. So the main component of our funding is our foundation allowance, which is allocated from the state. So this chart gives you the history of the last twelve years of our foundation allowances, which includes the governor's rebasing for the 2011-12 school year. And so you can see back in 2009-10 was the year where reductions were made to our foundation allowance. And then it started to rise slightly in 1314 as the economy started to get better. And for the last two years, we've had increases of $120 per pupil. Actually, 2000, well, nineteen actually should reflect a decrease based on the 650. But 2019-20, that was the number that we started with, the 120, so. So when I looked at what our foundation allowance is for the upcoming school year for 2021, the amount is $9,755. And that really takes us back to our 2000-2001 school year. So almost twenty years ago, we were receiving that same amount, and we're back to that. Our costs have not decreased. They've only gone up, so. So the next chart we've provided you with shows the cumulative rate of inflation since Proposal A and our per-pupil foundation increases. So the top line shows the rate of inflation, and the bottom line shows the percent increase in the foundation. And so you can tell in 2019-20, that dip is for the $650 that we built into the budget. And then we assumed a flat foundation allowance with that continued $650. So the difference between the rate of inflation and our foundation allowance is about 37.2% or $4,860 per pupil. So as you can see, that is a huge number. I think I calculated it earlier. And, you know, it was roughly around $45 million. And if you take into account the retirement rate increases that also come about, that gap is even larger for us. So to look at the general fund, excuse me, our revenue is projected to decrease 0.07% to about $135.9 million. And expenditures are projected to decrease just under 2% to $136.5 million. So at June 30th, 2021, our projected overall fund balance is estimated to be 0.2%. So maintaining a fund balance allows the district the ability to weather negative economic situations as we've been able to do now, along with reductions that we've made. And it also assists with our cash flow as our payments from the state were based upon their fiscal year and not ours. So two of our state aid payments are received in the summer months after we have finished up our fiscal year. So we are projecting a decrease of approximately eighty-three students. And so we started out looking at projections from Plant Moran Cressa. We've analyzed, you know, the difference between graduating seniors and incoming kindergarteners. We also received projections from another firm that is experienced in enrollments. We've looked at our Section 105 school of choice applications, tried to factor that in. And then as we've learned about the impacts of the pandemic that's come about, not knowing how school will start up in the fall and whether students will come back, whether we'll be able to do a fall student count, we decided, based on some conversations that had taken place amongst various groups, that we would use our spring 2020 count as the enrollment for our fiscal year 21 budget. So the estimated fund balance shown here is within the fund balance target, the board's fund balance target of eight to twelve percent. So we feel that the estimates, even with the number of unknowns in the budget at this point and including the results of 2019-20, that will remain within that target. So as I've mentioned, there are many unknowns when putting together this budget and even more so this year than any other year. You know, our typical unknowns are the foundation allowance that typically doesn't get to us until after we've had to put together our budget. We also, you know, have to use projected enrollments for student count information. And this year, we've had to make some assumptions and related to the impacts of the coronavirus pandemic. And included with that are, will there be federal stabilization funds that might be able to help absorb some of this $650 reduction? Will there be any state stabilization funds? So the state does have a stabilization fund that has $1.1 billion in it. Twenty-five percent of that can be used during any year in the legislature. Can take a with a two-thirds vote to use more of that if necessary. So we're hoping that there will be some recognition that this significant reduction to schools, you know, we definitely need help with that, and especially if we have these additional costs for, you know, sterilization and cleaning and things related to the pandemic. So again, self-funded insurance benefit costs, we don't always know what those are. We have to make assumptions and projections on those. And we don't know what our actual staffing is in place until the fall. And then again, what will school look like in the fall? So I am going to turn it over to Kim Pincheck at this point, and she is going to go through the tax levy part of our public hearing.
Thank you, Jennifer. So the district levies millages on homesteads, non-homesteads, commercial, personal, and industrial personal properties. Commercial and industrial personal are levied separately from non-homesteads due to a change in the law with the adoption of the Michigan Business Tax to help businesses to offset a portion of their tax burden. Non-homesteads are primarily businesses and industrial properties. So as you can see on this slide, the local hold harmless millage rate on homestead property will decrease 0.3183 mils to 7.2451 mils. And the debt millage rate will decrease 0.1 mils to 3.2 mils. This is despite the passing of the 2020 bond. The overall millage rate to taxpayers includes the operating millage, the debt millage, and the state property tax for education. This millage rate allows the district to collect the full hold harmless rate that was established by Proposal A at $2,067.22 per pupil. The decrease in the hold harmless millage rate is caused by two factors. The property values on homesteads have increased, and our estimated student count has declined. The debt millage is the amount needed to pay the annual principal and interest costs on bonded debt. The successful election in August of 2015 allows the district to levy the full hold harmless millage as calculated. The headly rollback permanently reduced the overall millage authorized, but no funding was lost due to this rollback. On non-homestead property, the millage rate will be 27.2 mils, of which eighteen is for operations, 3.2 mils is for debt, and six is for the state education tax. The millage rate for non-homesteads was based on the passage of the millage election of August 2015. As you remember, we had a headly rollback that threatened to permanently reduce our funding several years ago. In the election of November 2017, we were able to restore our millage levy to get us back up to the eighteen mils on non-homestead properties. An additional one mil was also approved by the voters to absorb the impact of future headly rollbacks. But just remember, we can only, or we can never levy more than the eighteen mils on the non-homestead properties. With the law enacted in 2009, commercial personal property is no longer levied at the full non-homestead rate, but now classified as homestead. A whole harmless district can levy the full hold harmless mils plus an additional six mils of the operating levy, which equals the operating millage on this slide shown at 13.2451. The millage rate for debt is 3.2, and the state also levies the full state education tax of six mils. For industrial personal property, the full hold harmless millage is levied at 7.2451, and the debt mils is levied at 3.2 mils. No state education tax is levied on this type of property. Very quickly, we'd like to provide you with an overall look at how revenues and expenditures on the 2021 budget break down. You can see that we are very dependent on the state revenue, with fifty-six percent of our revenue coming in from state aid, twenty-nine percent from property taxes, and fifteen percent from other sources, which include, the two largest of the other sources would include our federal grants and our countywide PA-18 Special Education Millage. The majority of state revenues comes from the per-pupil foundation. Of the projected $9,755 per pupil, $5,080 comes from the state, from the state education mills, as well as a variety of other state sources, including the lottery, sales tax, and other taxes. $2,067 comes from homeowners from the hold harmless millage and $2,608 from business and industry from the non-homestead millage. As taxable values increase, the pieces of the pie change. Many taxpayers believe that our funding is increased when their property values increase. However, we receive, that we do receive additional money from the state. However, the state sets our foundation allowance, and their share is reduced if a higher percentage of taxes is derived from property taxes due to higher taxable values. This next slide is looking at expenditures. The chart is by type of expenditure, and it shows that eighty-five percent of our costs are salaries and benefits, which is shown here in the blue and green pieces of the pie. This percentage is typical across the state for a labor-intensive business such as ours. Another way to look at expenditures is by function or program. So this next chart shows that our instructional and pupil services, which comprise about seventy-seven percent of the budget and are represented by every color shown here except for yellow and black. Support services make up twenty-two percent of expenditures, and that's shown in the yellow pie piece. And intergovernmental payments make up approximately one percent of expenditures. Also, in 2021, there are no budgeted transfers out of the general fund. This breakdown is based on the state's accounting manual for tracking costs and specific examples of costs that would be in our support function versus instructional would be utility costs of the school district buildings as well as transportation costs. Slide 18 also includes in your budget document our historical information such as taxable values, the tax levy information, and bond payment information. We have also included an informational section in the budget, which has a three-year forecast of all funds, an actual projected enrollment, staffing by function, and points of pride. Looking ahead, the budget document also includes a three-year financial forecast through the fiscal year 2023-2024. This is for all of the district's funds. The forecast shows that the general fund fund balance would continue to meet the board's policy target range over the next three years. These forecasts are tools for the district to use to help us determine what we will need to do in the future to keep our fund balance intact. We continue to face tough decisions as a district to balance the budget with minimal impacts to student programs. It's our intent to have balanced budgets in future forecasted years. The upkeep of our physical plant continues to be addressed with our 2018 Building and Site Fund as well as our 2020 Building and Site Fund. It will also ensure that more improvements can be made as well as allowing for additional purchases of technology and school buses. At this time, Jennifer will give you an overview of the other funds of the district and a look at our general fund amended budget for fiscal year 2020.
This fund includes all activity related to the payment of principal and interest on the bonds of the district. And we will be levying 3.2 mils on all property types to cover these costs. The property values are reviewed annually, and the millage rate is set depending upon what occurs with the values to cover the annual principal and interest payments on the outstanding debt. The Nutritious Services Special Revenue Fund records the transactions for running the school breakfast and lunch programs and is projected to add approximately $13,000 to its fund balance. So approximately $129,000 has been budgeted to pay for new kitchen equipment at multiple elementary buildings. elementary buildings upcoming summer. We also maintain the Student Activities Special Revenue Fund, which was created in the fiscal year that we're in, 2019, 2020, as a result of a new GASB accounting standard, GASB 84. And it requires schools to evaluate student activity accounts, which were previously recorded in an agency fund, for certain criteria, and record the transactions in this new special revenue fund. So due to the COVID-19 pandemic, there was an opportunity to delay implementation of this new pronouncement, and so we have decided to, you know, delay until fiscal year 21, as we're still working through some of the mechanics of this new requirement. So we've budgeted revenues and expenditures at the same amount for next year. So the Technology Other Projects Fund and the Bus Purchase Maintenance Fund are not budgeted to receive any money from the general fund in fiscal year 21, due to the reduction in state aid to the general fund. So funds in the Technology Other Projects are earmarked for future technology needs and device refresh. And the Bus Purchase Maintenance Fund will be used for future bus purchases or identified capital needs after the completion of the bond work. The Building and Site 2018 Fund and the Building and Site 2020 Fund track the expenditures of the district's bond proceeds to align with the ballot proposal that was approved. And we continue to put new technology in the hands of staff and students, new buses on the road, and continued construction on our building site. Benefit Stabilization Fund was created for the payment of our health, dental, vision, life, and long-term disability insurance. Charges will occur to the general fund and Nutrition Services Fund based upon the established illustrative rates of what our anticipated costs are. This, these charges to those two funds allow this fund to operate and then pay the claims that are incurred. So this last slide highlights the general fund adjustments made for 2019, 2020, and they center around five key areas. So federal grants, which have been updated to include grant awards to date, revised property taxes and state revenue for changes in taxable value, and the large anticipated reduction in our per pupil foundation, and any other pupil count changes that may have occurred. So again, we incorporated that $650 per pupil reduction into our 2019, 2020. We've reduced our benefit costs, so based on the effects of the coronavirus, our claims incurred were lower, and so we were able to reduce, reduce some of the costs that were charged to the general fund and Nutrition Services Fund. Our substitute costs were reduced to reflect the closing of school for the last three months of the school year. And then we've also adjusted property sales revenue to reflect the proceeds of the sale of MTC, which is scheduled to close this Thursday. So all of the other funds have been adjusted to reflect the current status of those funds. So I just want to thank the business office for their work and helping to put together this document, especially Kim Pincheck and Kendra Montante from the School and Community Relations Department for their work in putting this document together. So as I mentioned, the budget document is available on the district's website, and we will also have a copy here at our central office building for those individuals who may not have access to.
Thank you.
Glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any comments or questions? Hearing anyone?
Yes.
Do I hear somebody? Mrs. Williams?
Thank you. Yeah, I had several questions, which I submitted. I won't go through all of them, but there are a couple that I would like the administration to speak to. One is around just maybe a description of how the budget reflects our educational priorities. If you could speak to that, I recognize that this was a tremendous effort, and there were a lot of moving parts to this. So I want to thank Ms. Kaminsky and her team for all of the work that went into this. We've met, and we've had several discussions as a finance committee. Just thought it would be helpful to describe for the public, you know, how the budget reflects our educational priorities.
I could speak to that. So as you know, we have a strategic plan in place, and I get to see with our strategic plan where we've actually had a budgeting process around the strategic initiatives in the district. So in terms of our current priorities and how they were set, we took a phase in reduction, if you recall. So Phase 1 was, or the overall consideration was, is to protect programs and services to the students to the extent we could, and make outside reductions first. So Phase, Phase 1 reductions, if you recall, were targeted at discretionary budget, third-party contracts, and other external vendors that we believe that we could do without for a year or several years. So we went ahead and made those types of reductions. The second level of reductions, we call Phase 2 reductions. Phase 2 reductions were more along the line of, if the board recalls, right sizing, asking the folks to run tighter schedules, taking a look at other areas of staffing, including transportation, to make sure we can keep routes within minimal times, and if we could reduce routes for transportation, if we could, there were certain, like retirements, and we were intentional about not going on hiring freezes and not bringing in new staff if it wasn't necessary, and reassigning staff to positions. So when we went through Phase 2 reductions, it was more of what we considered right sizing and just tightening our belt. We were very intentional about trying not to create a situation where we were cutting programs and services and opportunities for students. Although they were impacted, certainly, and those services may look different in the future, such as accelerated math, we were still able to provide that, and it would just look different, and the students would receive those services in a slightly different way. So I guess that was the Phase 2. We really weren't required to get into Phase 3 reductions, which would have been cutting programs, extracurricular opportunities for students, requesting, you know, going on, I guess, mass reductions in staffing that would increase class sizes to the extent that we had, we were going to have crowded classrooms. So we didn't, we weren't, we didn't find ourselves in a position where we were required to go to Phase 3 reductions. I'm not, I would have shared that and had that PowerPoint for the board again, or that document for the board again, if I could have anticipated this question. Also, in the reduction process, I'd like to remind the board that we, we, central office staff, and we took a look at district-level budgets and discretionary expenditures, those third-party contracts and the capital project areas, before we even requested that the buildings go through their budgets. Central office went through Phase 2 reductions prior to buildings going through Phase 2 reductions as well. We looked at non-instructional student services, like I said, transportation, the right sizing of personnel within central office. I think we came up with $178,000 worth of reductions there. And then we talked about using alternative revenues to offset general fund costs, and I believe we came up with about $160,000 there to preserve our resources in the classrooms. The building levels, when they took their turn and swing at the, you know, with the ball on this to help make reductions, their phase 2 reductions were just within their discretionary budgets, budgets in their building, for example, their per pupil allocations. And we talked about holding back on their carryover budgets. The carryover budgets is a practice in the district where you would carry over the money, but the carryover money would count as an expenditure in the following year budget, because that money would actually go back to the general fund or the fund balance. So the carryover concept actually creates additional expenditures for the district on the books. It just doesn't carry forward like we would think it would. So we reduced carryover budgets as well. Then we got into the building level Phase 2 reductions, which we did have to consider some non-instructional student services, right sizing the personnel and programs, and instructional support services. Those reductions equaled about $2 million worth of reductions. So out of about the, I would say, the little over $4 million or $4.2 million reductions, you know, slightly over half of those reductions came from discretionary budget and things that didn't impact our staff as direct services to students. The later, you know, about $2 million of it was impactful to staff, but it was administrative staff, central office staff, instructional support staff, not all teaching staff. So that's, that's how we kind of tried to preserve what was in the classroom. I do have a model for actually going through a budgeting process that supports, strategically supports, you know, what will be our future strategic initiatives and plans, but we just haven't had a chance to engage the board in that conversation yet.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? See, Mr. Rich?
Just really quickly, I want to thank our full team for putting all this together. I know it's a lot of work and being able to explain it to all of us, as well as everybody watching, which is the purpose of a budget hearing, is that we are also informing the public of everything that's going on. I just wanted to thank you for all of your efforts.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Well, question. Does this include what the situation that's going on at Farmington Central? I hear the whole, we're cutting and we're saving and all this other stuff, but we, you know, when Dr. Herrera was hired in, he did make mention that we were very top-heavy with several superintendents at the top, and now we have four. So, you know, it's becoming to look more like a business instead of what we do for children. We have four assistant superintendents, and so we're going to start doing things in, that will affect, and will eventually trinkle down into our classrooms. So I'd like to know that, is this part of this budget meeting that we're talking about Farmington Central?
Yes, I would, I would say it includes all programming, this budget hearing meeting. In terms of commenting on the administrative structure, I think the board was part of that conversation from the very beginning of the deep restructuring central office integration. We came up with the four assistant superintendent positions as a cost-neutral piece to the budget. We had, we had staff leaving central office in positions, and when we hired in new, we just created the four assistant superintendent positions. Also like to add that central office did reduce staff. We reduced approximately 188, or actually, let me take a look here, about $180,000 worth of reductions came out of central office, in terms of central office staff and supports to the building. So we did right-size central office as well. We also were able to, with the central office, able to reduce another $161,000 of, we were able to relieve general fund with, using alternative revenues to support central office positions where we hadn't in the past. So altogether, that's about $350,000 of reductions to central office and general fund.
Any other questions? Seeing no additional questions, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Come to adjourn?
So moved, support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Williams to adjourn the meeting, supported by Mr. Mukama. Any discussion? Mrs. Williams, please do a roll call vote.
That motion was reported by Mr. Johnson.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, can we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mukama?
Yes.
I myself, yes. Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you, this meeting is adjourned, and we will convene back in our regular meeting.